I'm good. My children have been here.
Yeah, we figured, no, uh, early enough. It was a nice, it was a lovely. No, you were on the spot. It's got lucky to school up, I think he is out of place right now. So you should go back and buy, like early. There's two or three after that. You would never see them.
Wait down there. Twelve feet apart. The place.
You didn't say the dog.
All right, five thirty. Wednesday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Here in the auditorium, virtually, we will be conducting a regular board of education meeting. I'd like to call it a quarter. Like that roll call, please stand.
Ron Pollard?
Here.
Linda Hyman?
Here.
Al Daxwell?
Here.
Ron Liberty?
Here.
Hunter Oskar?
Here.
Jeremy Rasta?
Here.
John Smith?
Here.
Casey Holt?
Here.
Kevin Blake?
Here. Please stand as you're able and face aside with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the free and equal opportunity of all. Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. First thing on our agenda this evening is public comments. As you may or may not be aware, the board does schedule fifteen minutes at the beginning of each regular board meeting for members of the public to speak. Speakers are allocated, are allotted, three minutes to address the board. There's a large group designated one representative to speak. We do have various members of the community asking to speak this evening, so I will call on them. And I will tell the next person who is up, just in case you think you're in a different order. I would like to also inform everybody that while we appreciate your participation in the school board meeting this evening, the public comment period is an important time for the board to hear the concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, you may wish to consider whether the content of your speech could be harmful to an individual person. And if so, whether that person could have a legal claim against you related to the statement you make this evening. We have been advised, the Wisconsin Supreme Board has specifically ruled, there is no absolute privilege which protects the vamutory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that each speaker bears a personal risk if anything he or she says during public comment period of the school board meetings is vamutory slanders or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. At this time, the first person that we have will be coming to us virtually will be Tom Andresca, followed by Casey Holt. Tom, if you're up there, you have the floor. You may have done, you. Can I get out here, Tom? Can you? Tom?
Hold on. Yep, now you can get started.
There we go. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. All right, good evening, school board. You can hear me, right?
Yes, Tom, go ahead.
All right. My name is Tom Andresca, and I was a teacher in the district for thirty-five years, and I'm still in the district. And I'm here to speak about Tricia Dieter. I'm going to look down at my notes here quite a bit, so I apologize if you'll be looking down while I'm speaking. But over the years that I've been in the district, I've heard from a lot of teachers, and I've been able to work closely with a lot of different administrators. And I think over the time, I've been able to decide who's been good, who's been bad, and so forth. There's been some really excellent administrators in their district over the years, and Mrs. Dieter falls right with them. She's one of the better ones we've had over the years. So I'm speaking on her behalf. And when I self at Washington School, which I do quite often, I hear lots of great things about what she's doing, the teachers speak kindly of her. The students are doing really well. It's just a really great school right now. So I was very shocked and surprised, I guess, when I phoned out that Mrs. Dieter essentially is being fired from her job. I'm kind of baffled by the fact that when you do a good job and lose it, I'm not understanding that, how that happens. And looking at this, it seems to me that I know Mrs. Dieter can question some decisions that are made. And I think as an organization, you want to be like that, that not every time it's going to be always exactly what somebody wants, and you have to have that given date. And all good organizations have that. And it seems like the message that is coming across in the district is, please don't question what we're telling you, just do it because we're the people in charge. I think that's a very poor thing to do. Mrs. Dieter was born and raised Merrill Lake, is the Merrill Lake term, and after many years of teaching and being an administrator, came back around to get back to our community. And I think that is an awesome thing that she did, she's willing to come back. Mrs. Dieter lives in the district, raises her family, is involved in the community. And that's not true for the majority of our MAPS staff that don't live in the community. And I know you can say, well, that really has nothing to do with whether they keep a job or not. You're right, that probably shouldn't be, but I do think that's something that should be looked at a little bit in the fact that she was willing to come back and do that. If you look at Washington School, if you look at the data from the school report cards that I know you all have, if you look at the last three years, don't come last year because there was no reporting because of the pandemic. Washington School in the student achievement category, which is the PPI, states that that's the backbone of the report cards. Washington has an average score of seventy. The next closest school in our district is the middle school at fifty-seven and a half. It's not even close. So the school that's performing the best is losing their principal. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. A lot of decisions that are made, a lot of times are saved, I'd say, by attrition. And rumor has it that there is an elementary building principal that is going to be retiring at the end of the year. So to me, no building principal, elementary, should be losing a job. It's built through attrition. We do that year after year after year after year with a lot of the decisions. Why this isn't being done in this position, I'm not really sure. It shouldn't, it should be used for attrition. That's the simplest way that we do things. We've done it for years that I've been involved with this stuff. So I hope as a school board, you do not allow this decision to happen and look deeply into why this is such a poor decision and it needs to be changed. I think what the message between all of this is, do a good job, you'll lose your job. Why would anyone want to come into this district if that's the philosophy or that's what's happening? And it seems to be that's what's happening in this case. There's other choices that can be made, there's other choices that should be made, and I'm asking that the school board have the guts to say, hey, this is wrong. We're not going to allow this to happen. And I hope you can do that. Thank you very much for listening.
We'll be Lisa Hoss.
Hello. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Casey Holt. This is my fifth year as one of the school counselors at the high school. I am also a twenty-ten graduate of Merrill High. From a very young age, I knew I wanted to work in education, and as I grew older, I knew Merrill was the place I wanted to be. I am very blessed to be back home, one could even say a dream has come true. There's a lot to be said for working in your hometown. Interesting fact, over forty percent of the high school staff, including our principal, are Merrill graduates, and I believe it shows. Working in your hometown offers a sense of pride and commitment to not only our district, but to our community. Six years ago, Merrill alumni Tricia Dieter was also given the opportunity to return home. She would join the MAPS staff as the principal of Washington Elementary School. Tricia, who has worked in education for twenty-one years, whose husband is a MAPS employee, whose children currently attend MAPS schools, was told last Friday she would no longer have a job here and was being laid off for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Now, some of you may be wondering why I'm here speaking for Tricia as I don't work at her building. I first met Tricia five years ago at a training during my very first week as a new MAPS employee. Part of this training was meeting all of our district administrators. Each principal spoke about what was unique at their buildings, but Tricia's speech was different. She was the only one that talked a little of her building, but more of how she understands what it's like to be a new employee. She put us all at ease and was the most relatable. I will never forget her takeaway message from that day. Everybody makes mistakes, you are going to make mistakes, but you will be okay. Over the years, I've been on committees with Tricia, most recently before the pandemic, we were working on our project to bring Washington students to the high school once a month to complete social emotional lessons together. Whenever I'm with Tricia and hear her talk about her building, I can see and feel her excitement. Her passion and love for her students and staff radiates from her. It's something I wish I could capture in a bottle to show you. Tricia is creative, dedicated, driven, and one of a kind. In my five years here, I've sat on Tricia's advice more time than I can count. I look to her because she has many experiences to speak from. She's realistic and she's genuine. My apologies for taking up her time, she will tell me, Casey, don't be sorry, this is what I love to do, help people. And for that, I will be forever grateful to Tricia. I believe that laying off Tricia Dieter, a Merrill High alumni, a lifelong member of our Merrill community, a wife and mother of those that work and attend MAPS, nominated and chosen president of the Association of Wisconsin Administrators, and my mentor, would be a very large mistake and a devastating loss to MAPS and our community. I can confidently say that ever since I have met her, she has changed my life for the better, just as I know what she has done for our district and community. I hope that Tricia's layoff notice can be reconsidered. Thank you for your time.
We have Lisa Hoss, followed by Betty Zakowski.
Hello. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lisa Hoss. I am a lifelong of Merrill Lake, a twenty-two-year veteran of the MAPS district, and currently fourth-grade teacher at Washington Elementary. I'd like to speak to you today on behalf of Tricia Dieter. I've had the privilege to work under Tricia since she came to Washington as principal six years ago. I've learned so much from Tricia about school improvement, data analysis, assessment, curriculum, all of which are essential for schools to be successful. But more importantly, every day, I learn from her the importance of keeping students at the center of everything we do. Tricia is dedicated to all our students, not only their academic success, but also their social and emotional well-being. I've seen Tricia bend over backwards to help students and their families be successful. She routinely advocates for students, families, staff. She fights for our community because she is a part of our community. She went to school here, she lives here, her children attend school here, and she has drawn ties to Merrill. She is a blue jay through and through. In terms of Tricia's qualifications as an administrator, they are impeccable. Her last two summative evaluations were both rated as distinguished. She is a past president of OSOP. She's even showcased on their website, if you care to look. At MAPS, Tricia has been put in charge of things like revitalizing the elementary summer school program. This is just one example of many roles she has taken in the district. Tricia is the most veteran elementary principal and one of the most veteran administrators in our district, which is why many seek her out for both guidance and advice. Her experience and leadership skills are especially important as we are preparing the transition from three elementary schools to two grade-specific schools that we will have next year. I strongly encourage you to carefully consider the decision you will make tonight. Tricia is an asset our district cannot afford to lose. Our district is at a critical time as we prepare for the future, and there is no one better to help lead us through this transition than Tricia Dieter. Thank you for your time.
Followed by Marcy Cordova.
Hello. My name is Penney Zadzakowski. I'm a parent to a high school student and a hard grader at Washington Elementary. Mine's more of a personal comment. I would like to address a potential elimination of Mrs. Dieter Dan Brown for that tonight's school board meeting. My family would like to let you all know why we do not agree with this decision and hope you will consider voting to keep her within the district. There are numerous examples I could give you that would speak to her character, but for lack of time, I will pinpoint on a couple that are very personal to me. Prior to my daughter starting kindergarten, she was diagnosed with type one diabetes and required constant one-on-one supervision. With this diagnosis, there are many responsibilities in her daily care. She requires insulin adjustments based on food intake, car counting, and corruption to her blood sugar levels frequently. The risks associated with this far exceed the responsibility of just a classroom teacher. She requires an aide with her during the school day. Administration denied the need for a full-time aide and pushed for current staff to oversee this care. Mrs. Dieter, next to myself, was my daughter's biggest advocate. She caught two to nail to obtain this aide for her. She took it upon herself to work with county health, administration, and our family to get this approved. I understand that we are one of many families within the district with specialty needs, and I am confident that without Mrs. Dieter pushing for this, it would not have been fulfilled. Another example where I've seen her firsthand with the children first is busing. Due to my daughter's constant attention to medical issue, Tricia took it upon herself to ensure there was a proper handoff even after school. As a parent, I am sure of her care at school because of the daily interaction between her and my daughter. There is always communication between Mrs. Dieter, my husband, and I. It is not uncommon for us to receive an update outside of school hours. This goes to show she always has the best interest of the kids on her mind. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, we have Marcy, followed by Ryan Ortonovich.
Hello. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Marcy Cordova, and I'm a library technology specialist at the high school. I'm here to speak of Kesha Masek and all the good work she does. One of the last times I was in this room was back in March when we discussed what it would look like if we had to shut down. And the following Wednesday, we went virtual. Many school districts in our area did not have that quick turnaround time, including my own children, who don't go to school in Merrill, but they go to school in Annabelle. And I saw that Merrill had a really strong plan. We were ready to go, and I think that Kesha's leadership skills really were what made us ready to go. She always has a clear plan, she has strong leadership skills. We have plans and processes in place for any kind of eventuality. For example, on Monday, when I got up, I read the news and Google was out. Some of you may have not known that. So I texted Kesha, we had a texting circle going with IT department, and we had plans in place and ready to go. Gmail was out, we could not email each other, but she had plans in place for if that would happen. I think that shows what a strong leader she is, and she is always thinking, what could happen, what could happen next, and she's always thinking ahead. Tech is not an afterthought. In a lot of districts, it is. You know, tech is something that somebody gets stuck with at central office. I was in a meeting at Cisa nine a couple months ago, and one of the people that was attending was talking about how she drew the short straw and had to attend the tech meetings. That's not how it feels here. Here, it feels like tech is really important, and we really want to make sure that everybody has all their needs met and that we can use that, the tech to do that. I feel like Kesha is so proactive with figuring out what we need to do next. She's got a great vision for our future. I know a lot of my friends and family at other districts were really jealous of our iPads, that all of our students had iPads, that we could just like that switch over to them and do homework and, you know, not miss a beat. And a lot of people are so jealous, and I feel like her strong leadership really had us ready to go with that. So I really hope you reconsider laying her off. I think she's a strong asset to this district. She works very hard to get everything ready and ready to go, and I really hope you reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. Next, we have Brian Ortonovich.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we publicly recognize our secret Santa, some of those things that I don't want to become an afterthought after the holidays, but many people in our community aren't aware that we, for the past, it's been at least seven years, some wonderful person in our community donates, this year was two thousand dollars in cash, to our school. And it's really meant for our students that are in the highest need. When I started thinking about the environmental impact that is, when you start talking about seven to ten years, at least, and possibly longer, I was telling Tammy before the board meeting that I was telling Tammy before the board meeting that we've got to be in that $15,000 to $20,000 range, and we're talking not a few students, we're talking hundreds. Our counseling office has turned into like a, almost like a Santa's workshop, and our staff does a wonderful job of making sure that we are, helping those that are most in need in our community are doing something. And I know this takes place in our elementarys as well, but I want to make sure that we publicly thank our Secret Santa that seems to come through every single year for their LPN and our students. So, that's all.
That was what I had for what were comments. I did not see any other forms or any other people standing outside in the virtual world to speak. So at this time, we'll move on to the board recognition. We'd like to start with recognizing the DFW Voice of Democracy of Patriots Pen winners. Patriots Pen, an essay competition for 6th through 8th grade students, with this year's theme being what is patriotism to me? We'd like to recognize 5th place was Maria Talanowski. 6th place, Robin Schmidt. 10th place was Blade Went. If you're here, if you could come up on stage, I have a certificate for you also. Be followed by the Voice of Democracy, which was an audio essay competition. Winners for our 9th through 12th grade students with a theme of, is this the country the founders envisioned? 2nd place was Jackson DeYoung. 3rd place, Caleb Norton. 4th place, Caitlin Groob. 5th place, Nicole Zellner. 6th place, Matthew Palazzo. 7th place was Claire Dooley. Congratulations to all of you. And if any of you are here, please step forward on stage. I believe Caitlin is virtual. Congratulations Caitlin. Once again, congratulations to Caitlin, who is out remotely. Thank you. Next recognition that we have were the swim team state qualifiers and some school records of a girl from the Maryland girls' swim team. Like to start by recognizing Amber Winter from 200 IM, 8th state, the new school record. And 100 dress, 3rd state, the new school record. Also, Erin Connis, 503, 6th state. Erin Connis, Lady Zeal Star, Emma Potash, and Amber Winter, the 203 relay, 16th state. Congratulations to all of you ladies. If you're here, if you could please join us on stage. Congratulations ladies. All right, once again, congratulations to our swim state qualifiers. Wonderful season. Very proud of each and every one of you. Next recognition this evening is for Karen Bundrick, who I believe is in lockdown virtually or remotely this evening. Karen is a phenomenal veteran teacher. Her ability to remain calm during change and stress is to be admired. Karen is always willing to try new strategies and ideas. After many years as a 5th grade teacher, she took on the challenge of co-teaching a 4th and 5th grade multi-age setting. Karen is an exemplary teacher that truly knows how to form lasting, trusting relationships with students. Spend any amount of time in her classroom, and you will feel like you are at home with her caring and her trained demeanor. Help me recognize Karen Bundrick this evening. Next, we would like to recognize Nanette Chandler.
Thank you.
Passionate is the first word we would use to describe Nanette. Her passion for teaching, reading, and raising our most struggling readers to proficiency is unmatched. After many years as a reading teacher, Nanette was asked to share her expertise with others in co-teaching a 4th and 5th grade multi-age setting with three other teachers. Whether before school, after, or during the summer, she regularly, regularly uses her free time to make sure that all students' needs are being met. While she's a firm teacher with high expectations, students get the opportunity to work with her, often form lasting relationships, and work hard to rise to the challenge. Help me congratulate Nanette Chandler.
Thank you.
There she is. Next this evening, we would like to recognize Thomas Grun from Kate Goodrich Elementary School for going above and beyond. Certainly, it's been noted by students, administration, and staff throughout the Kate Goodrich Elementary building that Tom takes the time to get to know people and to simply listen during the day and what he's working on. So we would like to recognize Mr. Grun for taking that time, if it's out of lunch, and even though he has that quiet demeanor as a leader, that you will still see and feel his impact, that he has at Kate Goodrich Elementary, and it is unmeasurable. So Mr. Grun has been described as a true blessing to the school and certainly deserves this recognition. Help me this evening in recognizing Tom Grun. Is Tom able to join us this evening? All right, I will make sure that that gets shared with him. That is our recognition this evening. I would like to, at this time, call on our student board of education representatives for their report. Levi and Amelia are here. I see Amelia coming forward.
Levi is currently quarantined.
All right.
The Maryland High School has found many ways to bring Christmas spirit to all of the students. DECA is hosting an ugly sweater dress-up day every Friday before Christmas. If you participate in this event, you can get treats such as candy canes. And also this week before Christmas, DECA is hosting a Christmas dress-up week, including dates where you can wear your holiday pajamas and holiday socks, wear candy cane colors, and wear your holiday themed outfit. Also going on to get everyone in the Christmas spirit is a scavenger hunt. In the scavenger hunt, students can download an app, and they will find little missions and tasks to do in order to win points. At the end of this week, points will be totaled up, and the winning team will get a gift card, and the winning grade will receive winners. Everyone seems to be excited and enjoy participating in these festive activities that make this Christmas season just a little bit better. Another event that is going on at the Maryland High School is a new schedule. The high school has had yet another change in its schedule to accommodate a flex time period for teacher-student intervention. This flex period is placed at the end of the day, and in order to fit this in the lunch period, this in, the lunch period has been combined with period 6 classes and divided into A, B, and C lunch boxes. This schedule has been met with many mixed emotions. Overall, the students and staff alike know that they have to go with the flow and be flexible in these ever-changing times. As for winter sports that are going on, most seasons are going very well. Unfortunately, girls' basketball was shut down because of COVID. However, I believe they are back and practicing. However, boys' basketball has been doing very well and has only had one game rescheduled because of the virus, and have a record of three wins and two losses. Wrestling has a new approach to this year's season as they only participate in dual meets on Saturdays. And to keep everyone safe, rotate mats used to provide time for sanitation. Party is also going very well with no COVID issues.
Thank you, Amelia. Any board members have any further kind of questions for her? Otherwise, I think she's done a great job. We have Mr. Schmidt with a question for you, Amelia.
Not so much a question, but over the years, I've heard reports from the student representatives and valued them, but this year, I don't think I value them. And I value them more than ever before because it's like looking into the high school from your perspective. So you're doing a great job, and I just wanted you to know how much it means to us to hear from you directly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. If you didn't hear that, Amelia, Mr. Radliff, board member Radliff acknowledged that as well in virtual land.
Thank you.
I don't see any other answer questions, so thank you very much for your updates. Much appreciated. This time on our agenda, I will turn it over to Dr. Sample to start on the administrative reports, please.
Thanks, Kevin. Our first report comes to us from Glenda Odenzki, Director of Curriculum Instruction. Her report includes the continuous improvement plans, and within her report, she's showing the examples of the root cause analysis performed by our buildings, as well as the strategies to support growth in the areas that are showing deficiencies. You can see that each one of the building's reports, curriculum improvement plans are attached, and Glenda is available if you have any questions for either her or myself. Jill provided her monthly data from Hanover School for young learners. You can see that in her monthly report, attendance is down a little bit, but they are providing COVID strategies and flexibilities to meet the needs of their young learners. And also attached to Jill's report is her monthly peak card statement. Any questions for myself or Jill is also present? Our next reporter is from Karen Baker, our Director of Special Education and People's Services. She provided in her report the RDA achievement, which is a procedural compliance self-assessment. RDA stands for Reading Drives Achievement. This actually started in the spring of 2019, but because of COVID, that process still continues. Typically, this would have been finished, but the timeline has been extended, and it will be completed this school year. Any questions from Karen's informational report regarding the self-assessment process? Brian provided his monthly budget update as the Director of Finance. Are there any questions for myself or Brian with his informational report? Brian also oversees the toddler food service, but Laura is Director, and that monthly food service dashboard is also attached. Are there any questions for Brian or myself, as Brian is also present? Eddie provided his Human Resources report, monthly report. Eddie has been providing each building with employee benefits group information. Lots of presentations he had, which is most recently today with Kate Goodrich. He's also provided some information regarding the special education position. There was no acceptable applicants for this last posting, so that posting has been withdrawn and refreshed and is back up as posted. So we're hoping for candidates there. The staffing plan development is in progress, and he's provided an update regarding liquidated damages collection. Eddie's also present. Are there any questions for Eddie or myself? And finally, the superintendent's report. I've listed my monthly activities and meetings, giving you an update regarding administrative rounding, administrative evaluation progress, and building visibility. You can also see the alt meeting agendas and notes, as well as the central office admin meeting agenda items. And I've also provided this year the weekly bulletins that staff receive so that board members can see what goes out every Friday from my office. Any questions for on my report? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda is the committee reports. We've been off with the Finance and Human Resources Committee. Board was provided the draft minutes from the December 2nd, 2020 committee meeting. John Smith is Chair, and other members of the committee are available if there's any questions. Any board members have questions for the Finance HR Committee? Hearing none, our next committee report is the Facilities Committee with the attached draft minutes provided from the December 2nd, 2020 committee meeting. Myself as Chair and other members of the Facilities Committee are available for questions. Are there any questions on the, or for the Facilities Committee this evening? Hearing none, the next committee report will be for CTP, the Curriculum Technology People's Services Committee. Attached draft minutes were provided from the December 9th, 2020 committee meeting. Maria as the Chair and other members of that committee are available for questions. Any questions for the CTP committee this evening? All right. Thank you, everyone, for all of your attention. All right, thank you, everyone, for all of your attendance and work on the committee levels. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Currently, we do not have anything that was tabled or deemed unfinished, so we will move right into the agenda item for Board of Education business, starting with the WASB resolutions from the Delegate Assembly. We did have attached the proposed resolutions from WASB for the 2021 Delegate Assembly. At this point, I would be looking as the Delegate for our district for this year's Assembly at the virtual convention. Any guidance anyone has? If you did not make it through the 48 or 50 pages, please feel free to email me. We do have some time. That is toward the end of January. However, we wanted to give ample time for all board members to be taking a look at the different resolutions that are being proposed so I can help hold in a manner conducive for our district. Anyone have any comments on that item at this time? Mr. Smith?
I have a question to clarify. How we use this document is if we feel as though we should represent one of these resolutions from the position of the MAPS district? Maybe make a proposal then let this board adopt it as our own and submit it? Or how does that work?
So what is happening with the WASB resolutions for the Delegate Assembly is giving corrections for WASB at the state convention level to where they should be utilizing their resources for the next calendar year as far as proposals and making policy for WASB. We can certainly look at those ideas of those to be localized. This is talking at the state level. So some of these, as you can tell, the very first one was submitted by the Hudson School Board. There's another one. One of the next ones was from the Rossaw School District. So the initial intent of having this on Board of Education business was to recognize what was being submitted as proposed resolutions and then collaborate to see what the stance should be of the district voting at the state convention. If there is something that also comes to mind from that to localize, we would then submit that to Policy Committee and possibly update something at that level of time.
Okay, so then absent contributions from the members of this board, you would simply make a decision whether you wanted to pledge your support when you attended the convention on our behalf?
That's correct.
Any other questions in regards to this topic or on the reading?
This is something we could divide out into the committees, HR, and curriculum and look at these at committee level first. There's just too much to cover.
We certainly can do that if that is what the board would like. Any method of doing that, we've done personalized review and that back either via email or discussion in the past, but whatever is the best.
Just asking. We could do it as email.
I will certainly talk to the committee chairs and then I can talk to all of you and if that is something that we do necessarily, I'll work with Tammy and Dr. Sample to have on the committee agendas. Otherwise, I certainly look forward to any thoughts that you all have on these proposed resolutions. Is there any other hands up that I missed, board members? Otherwise, our next item is the enrollment cap for charter schools with topic summary sheets from John Haeckleister as well as Dr. Non. We do have a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Recommend a motion to approve the VDA and MGCs enrollment limits for the 2021-2022 school year as indicated in the topic summary sheets.
Motion by Maria, second by Jeremy. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is to consider proposal from School Perceptions for Referendum Planning Services. It was an attached topic summary sheet provided by Director Finance, Brian Dasher, and a recommended motion from the Finance, HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
Recommend a motion to accept the proposal from School Perceptions to begin work on planning for the renewal of the current operating referendum.
Motion by Brett, second. Is there any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Blake, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
First, my first question is, you know, while I do remember School Perceptions, it might be actively serving our needs due to referendum back then continually was. I'm just concerned, really concerned, I guess, just curious. Has that taught any other business or any other proposal other than School Perceptions? I just only see from my view of the summer sheet, I wouldn't see School Perception, but I will see any other, any other options. And big fan of Oxford, so I'm just curious, does any other, if this itself, any other options or consideration or School Perceptions only, don't, who's interested?
Go ahead, Dr. Sample.
Jeremy, we partnered with School Perceptions last year successfully and so with the amount currently under $10,000, now requiring bid, we felt very comfortable and that's where the discussion was at the committee level. And so the two individuals are Bill Foster and Jill Huskison, who worked very closely with us last year and we've already been in touch. We'll plan on meeting depending on tonight's vote with Jill Huskison once we return from Christmas break. So that was kind of the basis and the discussion for the conversation that we had at committee level.
Okay, just to clarify, I guess, my knowledge is School Perception is the only option looking at there as any other options considered, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And they're the ones that provide us with the surveys, the survey data, the survey analysis, the marketing aspect and those types of things. So it's not, not to be confused with who provided us with the evenings and the library with the community conversation. So Bill Foster and Jill Huskison did provide surveys, analysis, and marketing.
Yep, yeah, I did that. I'd say I just wanted to clarify, you know, like I said, I'm not bad with options. I'm always looking at other, you know, getting other, you know, firms or organizations opportunities, but I guess if the district feels this, that's what we go and so, yeah.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Ron, go ahead.
So I understand that this is a kind of a timeline also, that we have to get started on this shortly, right after the first of the year, I understand?
Correct. It's going to begin rather early and so our initial meeting will begin after the first of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Smith?
Just a point, what Dr. Sample said last year, just for the record, I believe you mean four years ago, last referendum, correct?
Last, Dr. Four years, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I said last year, but thanks, Jeff. Or both, yes. Bye-bye.
Mr. Smith, if I have any other questions or discussion on this topic or motion? Kendra?
I just want to be clear, this is just for, to get the input from the community in regards to potential of a referendum, that is the whole process of that?
That's correct. And that's followed by the marketing, communication timelines, all of those things, yes. To get the input, to find out exactly what amounts and also to be able to communicate with the community, the need.
Thank you, Kendra. Mr. Smith?
I think to be able to provide us with kind of the wording of the referendum and the, I guess, willingness of the community, but what thresholds over what issues there's a more app to be courted about so that we don't propose a referendum that's destined to be a failure.
Next again for other questions. Mr. Smith, any other board member questions or discussion on this motion or topic?
Yeah, Mr. Blake, one more question, please.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I guess after I, yeah, thinking, just out of curiosity, well, I agree that school or the song, this organization was very active for us before, like 2018. Has, I guess, Mr. Sample or district that they evaluated other, well, for results from other districts that the organization participated in terms of referendums? And so what is their success rate?
Dr. Sample or Brian, would you like to start with Dr. Sample and if I have anything to add, I would welcome that.
I don't recall the specific success rate. I know that our success also is their success. It's very high. I also know that when they surveyed our community and they knew our community four years ago very well, that they gauged that the success of our referendum had come in at 62% and it came out at 62.7, so they were off just a hair. But they're very, very good at what they do. Brian, do you recall the specific success rate that School Perceptions has with their referendums?
I have the 80s, low 90s.
80s or low 90s, Jeremy. 80% is high, 80%, low 90% success rate, what we're recalling right now.
Perfect, thank you, Sample.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion? Just a reminder, the motion on the floor by Brett, the second by Ron, was to accept the proposal from School Perceptions to begin work on planning for the renewal of the current operating referendum. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any extensions this evening? Motion carries, unvoiced vote. Next item on our agenda is to adopt the budget forecast assumptions, the attached topic summary sheet provided from Brian Dasher, and a recommended motion from the Finance, Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to adopt the budget forecast scenario as presented as the district's base for a forecast, the district's base forecast for the 2022 fiscal year.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Is there any question or discussion on that motion that's on the floor right now? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries, unvoiced vote. Next item on our agenda is to approve updates to the budget development calendar, the attached topic summary sheet provided by Brian Dasher. On a recommended motion from the Finance, Human Resources Committee, do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Recommend to adopt the revised budget planning calendar.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Is there any question or discussion on that motion or this particular topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is to review the alternate Board of Financial Reports with the topic summary sheet provided by Brian Dasher and a recommended motion from the Finance, Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
Recommend a motion to adopt the revised format for the monthly Board of Financial Report and to eliminate the quarterly report for public expenditures greater than $5,000. The quarterly report of how the state traveled and the board's decision financial impacts.
Motion by Brett, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Ron, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Dasher, is this taking the place of that greeting packet we, uh, what's it called? You have the board members?
So you'll still get that greeting packet. You, the board section already has to approve all of the invoices that go on, all the checks. So you'll still get that. There's historically, the reason two of you have gotten it, years and years and years ago, there was practice established that Board Treasurer and other representative board would be the finance director prior to more being to go over and crush things and things like that. That has been done for quite a few years and so that doesn't really need to be mailed out as a PDF hard copy because I think it's included in the word packet electronically. And so that, there's no real reason to just, to continue that practice. And that, that was more of a, I don't know if the board ever actually, that was established before my time. So I don't know if there was actual formal tanning to remember, if there was formal board action to establish that practice. But you do, you do still need the reports, those wire transfers, AP trans, ACH payments and stuff like that. You do need to approve those in the consent agenda.
Is that in this block here right now?
Yes. That's coming up, it's in that block, it's coming up, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Any other questions or discussion? All right, Brian, the microphone, Mr. Smith?
I'd be in favor of suspending the mailings of those packets to the houses, especially if it's included in the consent agenda on this. If we want to look, I mean, if it's available to look at, I don't think we have to go into trouble, you know? I don't know if that needs an action or...
Brett, do we have a friendly amendment to suspend said mailing?
The large mailings that come out with the quarter, is it quarterly travel?
The monthly payments.
Monthly payments.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment there. Are you all right with that, Maria? Excellent. Any other questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any extensions?
So I guess, I just feel compelled to say my heart goes out to everyone affected by this decision and I just wanted to make it known on the record that I do not take this decision lightly whatsoever. I actually take it very heavily, but it is what it is and we have to make tough decisions. That's one of the downsides of working on or really working, me and capacity is making decisions that's for our district and that's for everybody involved, including staff, our parents, our students.
Thank you, Jeremy. Ron?
This is in the best interest of the school system. It's real hard to eliminate people and positions. I think she was doing a wonderful job. She helped me a lot when it first got out of the world, it got set up. It's, we have to make some cuts someplace, so it is a tough decision.
Thank you, Ron. Do we have any other questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Do we have any other questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Go ahead, Linda.
Because I'm reading this right now as it gets the administrative off director of technology's position. Now, I believe that when we go into closed sessions, we're going to be discussing the elimination of potential employees losing their jobs. Is that correct? Because I take this as the position of the tech, the director of technology, not the person itself at this time. Because that's kind of how I'm reading it, is director of technology integration position. So, and, and that's kind of like what Nups was asking me, because it makes it sound like it's just the position itself, not the person. And that's what we were going to discuss in the closed session, I believe. Is that right? Or I guess is it supposed to be read differently?
You're reading the agenda item correctly and the order of events you have envisioned correctly?
Okay.
Anything you would like to add to that, Dr. Sample?
No, technically you're absolutely correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's what I'm voting on, because I don't want to make a mistake.
Thank you for clarification, Linda. Any other discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries, unvoiced vote. Next item we have on our agenda is informational only. It is the building configuration timeline update. And the topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Sample last year at this time. For a few highlights of some of the updates on there. Dr. Sample?
We consolidated everything into that timeline. And so the building configuration was a standing agenda item on each committee level and then as well as the full board. And now that the strategic timeline will contain everything needed from all departments. And so that timeline will be, as well as the progress toward that timeline, will be shared at each committee level and each work meeting as well. So we've got a lot of work to do between now and, and next year.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Anyone have any questions or discussion on this particular agenda item? All right, once again, thank you for the explanation, Dr. Sample, and everyone's work on, on your team for consolidating everything into that building configuration timeline and the update provided. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I'll ask if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I would look for a motion on this evening? John?
My motion to approve consent agenda, sorry. My motion to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes the second reading's approval of policy 6114, cost principles, spending federal funds, and policy 6325, procurement, federal grants and funds, waiting for the first reading and approving of policy 8315, information management as a second reading. Minutes of the November 18th, 2020 meeting, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling Personnel report as presented and donations totaling $1,490. And a friendly amendment to the December 18th minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have a second to that motion? Second by Maria. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries, unvoiced vote. Next item on our agenda is just a reminder, items for future meetings. We're keeping this on there at this time, just as a reminder that while we do take things to committee first and you can work on your committee agendas by talking topics for a committee meeting by talking to the committee chair. If it needs to be addressed tightly and that meeting has passed, please get in touch with myself or Dr. Sample and we will work on getting that into next corresponding agenda. Next item on our agenda will be the last time we talked about this based on the motion, which is the board decision for financial impact summary that will be modified and turned in to our monthly reporting. Anyone has any information on that? Certainly we can talk in the Finance Human Resources Committee. Are there any other suggestions of the, otherwise that report we're looking forward to for next month? Thank you for your work on that, Brian. A reminder that tomorrow, the radio program is scheduled for, as I said, tomorrow, Thursday, December 17th at 8:15 a.m. Blue Day 730 Radio, Dr. Sample and myself will be reviewing the next board meeting. Future meetings, the reminders thereof will be the Facilities Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 6th, 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom, followed immediately by the Finance Human Resources Committee meeting at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom on January 6th. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting will be held on Monday, January 11th, 2021, at 6 p.m., which is hosted virtually. The Head Start Policy Council is next meeting on Tuesday, January 12th, at 5:30 p.m., also a virtual meeting. Our CTP Committee, Curriculum Technology and pupil services, has their next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January 13th, beginning at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Next regularly scheduled for meeting is Wednesday, January 27th, 2021, beginning at 5:30 p.m. here in the Merrill High School Auditorium and also virtually or remotely. At this time, we will contemplate a motion to adjourn to executive close session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, grant one, grant C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility for any deliberating or negotiation of the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, grant F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for for envy applies, which discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigation, or investigations. The purpose of the close session is to discuss the validity of an individual teacher contract and to take potential action regarding the status of the teacher, a preliminary consideration of non-renewal of employment or the renewal, non-renewal to administrators, and to discuss administrators and supervisors' evaluations and consider administrative contract extensions. Do I have that motion at this time? Motion by Maria, do we have a second? By Kendra. Tammy, could I have a roll call on that, please?
Russ Waller?
Aye.
Linda Yunglin? Aye. Russ Asher?
Aye.
Ron Mudd?
Aye.
Dr. Ossip?
Aye.
Jeremy Rappel?
Aye.
Jessica Smith?
Aye.
Maria Wolfie?
Aye.
Kevin Blay?
It is currently 6:44 p.m. We will excuse ourselves from the auditorium for close session. And if needed, we would contemplate a motion at the conclusion of close to reconvene and open session. Thank you all for your attendance this evening.